The, um, led by the religions person. Led you legends.
To the line of the United States of America. And to the reality for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian Robertson.
Here.
Lindsey Washman. Roger Faust. Here. Chad Lake. Here.
First we need to amend the agenda under new business. Section D, two members of the reorganization. We need to remove that as we are not ready for that yet. I will make a motion to amend the agenda to remove that item.
Second. Brian.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Alright, uh, public comment concerns. Please limit your comments and concerns to five minutes. Anyone that would like to speak, please come to the podium. No one? Alright, well, we'll move on. Presentations, we have no presentations. New business, Commonwealth. Got a amendment number four.
Can everybody hear me?
I have to speak louder.
Is that better?
A little bit, I can hear you fine.
So, we have two items to present to do, uh, tonight. Uh, one is a contract amendment. This is specifically for construction services for the PAST project, construction section during that phase of the project. This just moves around some of the other funds and adds a little bit to account for all those services throughout construction. Uh, this amendment amount would be in the total of maybe $1,000. In addition to that, uh, there are funds that are going to be utilized for the wells. We've had some previous discussions with Gary about retesting some of the existing wells at the water treatment plant. So, we have, um, quotes in with Oregon right now to camera and retest those wells to see if they can supply capacity. I know at previous council meeting, there's discussion about wells and what I consider about how much water may would be needed. So, this might be a viable alternative that the Dan and CDS could actually utilize once we have those results. Second item would be a asset management program certification form. So, as part of the SRF program, uh, this essentially is a certifying statement for the town. And as part of those SRF funding programs that you will have and maintain an asset management plan as part of the agreement to the funding. And this is just to formalize that. Are there any questions or any concern?
Uh, the amendment additional money, that, that is to cover the additional timeline that we need to complete the water main project.
Yes.
For the engineering services.
Yes.
I'm going to counsel, I have any questions? Is this all under amendment number four?
Yes. That's right.
I'll entertain a motion for accept amendment number four in the amount of $81,000.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Brian.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
No.
Does the SRF thing we voted on, or is it just this?
Certification. I entertain a motion to accept the state revolving fund loan program asset management.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
How much is it?
Do you know that off the top of your head, Riley?
I was asking. No, there, there is no.
Brian.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
That'll be it for Charlie?
That'll be it.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we crown and associates, there are two proposals tonight for the reorganization of LaPelle and Stony Creek Township.
Thank you. In record, my name is Buzz Chrome. Executive Partner, I know who the Chrome Associates with me is Michelle Davis. We did that last time. We, uh, handed out what I think lays out sort of the overview of what, what you're embarking upon. And, uh, sort of the process that needs to take place. And then, uh, more specifically, what scope of services we would, we would have be playing in regards to the preparation of the fiscal impact analysis, which is a required document for the, uh, reorganization. Obviously, the, the two bodies, which would be Stony Township and the town council would need to come to an agreement on what the level of services to be provided in what we'll call the new town, being the reorganized town. But there, we would still refer to the existing town of LaPelle, sort of the old town. And then, the, the rural area to come in with the rural district is sort of the nomenclature that, that we've used in describing, uh, the distinction between what level of service you're going to provide to the outside of, of the old town area. Obviously, the county roads and so forth are a big, big issue. And we probably need to consider interlocal agreement with the county also to see to what extent they would still participate in, in snow removal, road maintenance, things of that nature, if at all. And if not, uh, that would become a, a burden of the new town, obviously. But, uh, again, there'd be identical resolutions that would need to be adopted. That would include a formal reorganizational plan. And, and again, the fiscal impact is obviously an important component of that plan because you'll need to have public hearings, at least two public hearings, uh, before, at, at least three months, I believe, before it goes to a referendum. And, um, the people are going to be interested in, well, what does that do to my property tax bill? What does that do to my property tax rate? You'll be interested to see what revenues you're going to have to work with. And, uh, to what extent, uh, there hopefully are savings by the reorganization with the administrative, uh, uh, functions that would be consolidated. But then, again, I, I think, I didn't, you know, to the extent police and fire are going to be covering all of Stony Township, uh, that's a big issue for the town to consider. And with, uh, the county commissioners and the sheriff, you know, are, are they still going to be, uh, be able to rely on their support for public safety in, in the rural district, if you will? You're probably first responder already, I would imagine, in a lot of the cases, uh, with the police and fire. The, uh, the plan of the reorganization is really the heavy lifting that the council and the trustee board would have to go through to identify exactly, you know, what, what service can be anticipated in the rural district versus the, uh, the town, the old town. And what tax rates you carry forward. Debt is a big issue. If you've issued debt, from the town standpoint, the, the old town needs to support that debt. Just like if the township has its own debt, the rural district would, unless it's already something that's being paid by the town. But if, if the township were to have its own debt, uh, that's something that those folks would, would be responsible for going forward. Primary areas of the reorganization plan, obviously, include administrative services. The township board would sort of cease to exist. And there would be an expanded town council. That would probably go from your current levels, five to up to seven would be my guess is how that would work out. Public safety and police and fire is a big issue for the reorganization plan. Road improvements, snow removal, grading and maintenance of the roads and streets, that's a big issue. And whether or not the county must still support, support those, you know, that activity. Cemetery maintenance is another issue, weed control, township assistance. And then, obviously, utility services, I believe you're probably already in the driver's seat, seeing in that regard. Probably need an interlocal agreement between the township board, the town, and hopefully the county commissioners, to the extent that they're going to continue to support activities in the, in the rural district. The, uh, you know, basically, the purpose of the fiscal impact is to identify the estimated financial impact of the reorganization on the taxpayers in the town, township, and, uh, what are the tax rates expected to be? What are the expenditures anticipated to be? And again, the service level and annual debt payments. Those are sort of the big, big issues in terms of whether, to what extent the rates would be differentiated. Description of the plan, uh, services to the new town, methods of financing those services, itemized estimate costage department. And a description of capital improvements to be provided by the new town, and the method or methods of financing, financing those capital improvements. Any estimated effects on the political subdivisions in Madison County that are not participating in the reorganization? And on taxpayers located in those political subdivisions is also an issue. Our scope of services would include analyzing the budgeted expenditures. I think we can probably look forward to the page 26 budget year as adjusted for anticipated changes that might come about that through the reorganization. We would look at the former ones that are in your 2026 budgets that have, I presume, already been filed with DLGF. And have you, have you received your 1782 notice yet? Okay, so you, you already have that from this company. So, I knew some of those had, had come out already, but, uh, not, not everybody. Again, analyzing the outstanding debt between the town and the township and how the reorganization plan would, uh, address those responsibilities. Analysis of the cash balances at the end of this year and at the estimated end of next year as projected in your 1782 budget notice. Analysis of anticipated revenue, again, based on what's in the 2026 1782 budget notices. And at that point, then calculation of estimated tax levies, tax rates, and, uh, the new town, for the new town, based on, uh, budgeted expenditure and revenues. We would also look at the potential impact that Senate Rollback One would have on assessed values, property tax rate, and potential circuit breaker or tax cap losses. So, that, that is sort of a broad overview of the process that we see, the scope of work that we would be looking at providing. I think it's important to know the heavy lifting is really going to rest with the town board and the township board in coming up with, agreeing on what's, what services are going to be offered that the town currently doesn't provide out there and what ones won't be offered. So, that's, that's probably the, the heavy lifting part of the thing. Once that gets worked out and, uh, you know, we'll crunch the numbers different ways to help you analyze those variables as they come up. But, uh, that's in a nutshell. We put in a estimated D range of $25,000 to $40,000. Again, that, that's sort of an estimate. A lot of times you get into these kind of things, you don't really know what you're getting into. But, uh, we feel like that's a pretty, pretty broad range that, uh, hopefully we can all live within. At that point, I'll ask for any questions you might have.
You have an estimated timeline because we have, we're going to have a crunch timeline on this to try to get it done before the cutout for the November election.
Yeah, I, I don't see that as a problem. I think, you know, the big issue is going to be coming up with what services are going to be offered inside. Now, but I, I think, you know, 60 days would be a good timeline for us to get our, you know, baseline financial information together. And then, after that, we can look at various projections of, you know, what those services are going to be and how much anticipated to cost. So, but, uh, I would say, you know, hopefully, it could all be completed within six months, you know, before you can, before you have to do your advice for 27. That'd be my thought and estimate there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Rudy. I won't talk as long. Third or meetings last step, Rob, isn't it? Alright. Well, I'm Brandon Robbins for Rudy Financial Group. I'm one of the owners there, um, or partners. Some of you guys I've worked with for the last two years on this fire territory expansion kind of bit through the, uh, the trenches on that. Fortunately, we were able to get it through with the legislation change kind of happening in the 11 hour there. So, um, I think Buzz did a really good job of talking about the description and the outline of what would happen. And I totally agree that, uh, a lot of the heavy lifting in our experience has been how you guys want to structure the government. As far as the financial analysis goes, I'll just kind of briefly talk about our process and some of the things we can bring to the table with our team. Kind of starting with the fire protection territory analysis, going back to the time that we spent on that allowed us to really get a good fundamental understanding of where your budgets currently are, your local income tax structures, circuit breaker structures, levies. So, we really obviously have a good understanding among this community, the township, and all the other units that we serve in that. So, um, you know, our company currently, uh, helps out on some other financial advisory roles for the town. I think Biggie was on an RBC call just an hour ago here. So, um, the, the, the big thing I would say in, in understanding how, how we would approach the process, when we think about things like SCA one that just got passed and kind of dropped on everybody, one thing our company's done is really been on the forefront of that. So, we've, we've partnered with AIM and even other financial consultants in this space to really provide a foundation of understanding for what it's going to do to communities. I think a lot of it's really been pointed at, you know, the, obviously, the taxpayer side. And in our communities that we serve are, are unaware of really what the implications are. And in doing, doing that, the reason why I brought it up is we've developed a parcel level analysis. So, we've actually obtained every single parcel of land in the state of Indiana. And we've broken it down by every single county and every single unit. So, we have the ability to be really efficient in putting that parcel level together. And I think inside of the reorganization process, um, you really got to take a look at every single parcel and, and then combine this geographical area. And then that way you can get as minute as, as every individual taxpayer and all the way up to the impacts on every single unit that are going to be a part of this or impacted by this. So, with that, I mean, that, that really takes care of the kind of the property tax side. But then, you also have the local income tax side. And in the SCA one piece, we've modeled that as well for what it's going to look like in 2028. And the big thing I think about in doing a reorganization today, um, a lot of stuff's changing, right? So, uh, in 2026, we're seeing the, the first phase of the new fire territory phase in. We're going to have a three-year phase in of that. So, our modeling is going to give us a baseline based on the parcel information. And then each year, we'll implement the new tax rates based on the fire territory restructuring because we know that's going to scale up. We have all the assessed value growth data trends. We'll have all that built in, circuit breaker. And then ultimately get to that, that bigger obstacle of when we hit 2028, we're going to see local income tax reform. So, all of that would be integrated into this model. So, I guess, and in this case, it's not really reinventing the wheel. We kind of have the baseline established. We're going to do much of the same, you know, process and working with you guys. I think what that efficiency allows us to do is spend more time with you guys and really understanding what you want this governmental unit to look like. Because in this, in this modeling, uh, you guys know, I mean, for, for the folks that were part of that territory, the first option was the 50th, you know, we had 50 different changes in that thing, you know? So, we want to schedule it and set it up to where if you have changes and you want to see different ways of looking at it, we can do that. You know, Buzz mentioned the rule in urban areas. There's different ways you can structure the tax rates inside of a reorganization. So, and every time we do that, it changes every single other piece of it, not only for your taxpayers, but also for the units of government that are impacted by it. So, that's kind of a, in a nutshell, um, some of the efficiencies we'll be able to bring to the table with that. Our process, uh, will start with that parcel level data, working with you guys to come up with the direction you want to go on the, the tax structuring for the rule in urban areas. Kind of giving you guys some insight on either the benefit or the detriment to the taxpayer. And then ultimately, all the way up to the top, kind of the modeling you guys saw on the territory stuff for the overlapping units and what that looks like. I, as I recall, um, we've been involved in these before, but the, the DLGF requires a three-year look forward. So, a lot of things are going to change in that three years. Likely what we would probably do is want to look at it for like a five-year period. So, you can kind of get to some normalcy maybe after that three years. So, that's, that's kind of what we're proposing. I've got a detailed breakdown, uh, inside of that. If you'd like me to go through it, I'd be happy to. Our initial, uh, fee structure and just that way everybody's kind of on the same page. We've got a $20,000 not to exceed. That's to build the fiscal analysis and to meet with you guys on the, the final approach to that. And then from there, if there's a bunch of additional meetings, it would just be the hourly. We kind of recognized during the fire protection territory piece, it wasn't just a two or three public meetings. It was, ended up being five public meetings and probably 15, you know, side meetings. And our hourly rates are broken down in there. And then they would be on the lower end of that range for that, just that, that time. So, lower to mid-range. So, um, I don't need to go into any more detail on the other steps. I think, I think Buzz did a good job on that. So, if you have any questions for us, I think you asked timeline on, on him. I mean, we have the database pretty much ready to roll out with the current, the 25 parcel data that's available. And we can get. parcel data that's available, and we can get started on it fairly quickly. I think we could get like an initial model out pretty fast here. Depends on how fast you guys want to move. We can be pretty flexible there. So even if we wanted to do it before the holidays, we could possibly get you a draft. But if like, you know, we'll probably need to move into next year, make sure nothing changes with the budgets, especially with your overlapping units as well. Maybe they have modifications to their budgets that affect those tax rates for '26. So that'd be a good baseline year for budgets, but we could get it done pretty early next And then definitely it's time for changes and stuff if you guys see fit there.
Jeff, does that fit in our timeline?
Every day, every day's important on this. We, as soon as we can make the decision, we should.
Do we make a decision on this tonight and vote on it?
We can. It's certainly permissible to, or you can chew on what you've heard and, and come back and do it either as, it would probably need to be at a special meeting prior to your December meeting, really next week, or, or you could continue this meeting to a date and time certain and come back and make that decision with it, and then you wouldn't have to re-notice.
Any comments from the rest of the council? Comments contained?
The, the process is laid out by the state. So we, you know, we need the vendor that's going to be able to get us the information quick enough that we can follow the timeline that's laid out for us and that can, can get it done. So our burden on this is to the taxpayers, to be able to inform them how this is going to work and so that they can vote appropriately in November on what they want to do.
How much money were we talking about?
Reedy's, is it not to exceed 20,000? Crone's is a $25,000 to $40,000 estimate.
Potentially 60,000? No, this is one or the other.
One or the other. I would entertain a motion to accept one of the proposals.
I would make a motion to accept a proposal from Reedy Financial.
One second.
Brian?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
I thank both of you for presenting tonight. My opinion was just, I think they're both great companies. Timeline was the biggest thing to bring. Now we're moving on to resignation letter from a BZA member. His term is ending, is the end of this year, and Tim Monroe does not want to continue. So there will be an opening on the BZA.
So he's staying on for the remainder of his term?
Yes, he's staying on to December 31st. What's the BZA? Board of Zoning Appeals.
What's the process if somebody wants to apply?
It's send a, let's see. Love and tent, who is? Info at LaPelle, Indiana. Now we have the proposal from Dependable Tree Service to remove a tree and some stumps. Yes, please.
This was Gary's thing, but he's not here, but I was with him. So there, we have a tree down on Central.
424.
Yeah, 424 Central Avenue. It's pretty dead and leaning towards somebody's house. So we're wanting to get that out of there. And then if you guys remember all the trees that we took out last fall, we need to get those stumps out. The reason there was one added on at the end, he had to get a price for that one because we forgot about the one in front of Bob and Stephanie Turner's house.
That's the 124 West 10th Street?
Yes.
Okay. These are all in the right of way?
Yes.
Town responsibility?
Are we able to add another stump issue, my chance? There's a stump by Daybreak Church out by the sidewalk. Might be two there actually.
Do you happen to know which road it's on?
Scream Street, I believe.
Yeah, we will look into those.
Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion to accept Dependable Tree Services' proposal of $4,200 to remove the tree and the stumps.
I'll make the motion to approve the proposal.
Brian?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Okay, CDS Engineers, gas sale and water update.
Good evening. Dan Cutshaw with CDS Engineers. The gas sale, I believe, I talked to Jeff earlier tonight, the asset purchase agreements, all good. It does need to be approved by the town council. This is the sale to Citizens Energy Group for the gas utility. The IURC will probably hear it sometime in February or March. So it is moving forward, but we do need to get the APA approved by the town council.
Is that, that's not open tonight, is it?
How soon does that need to be done?
For the IURC here.
So we could do it this summer?
You can do it this summer. All right, water update. I'm going to let you know what we've done to date. So we flushed the water system. Brandon's done a good job with that. We're going to look at some additional valves in the system, and that's, that's upcoming. The, we all met with Brockway a couple of different times, three times, I think, and we have limited their water usage. They've gone way, way down, and I'll say they've been very, very cooperative in that. They called us a couple of different times. We know they're talking with Brandon quite a bit. The elevated water tank has been cleaned, painted, and it's back in service. So we did get some iron in the bottom of that tank removed, remains removed. It's very clean, it's been pressure washed, it's back in service. As I mentioned before, we should plan to reevaluate that in, in a couple of years. The Ford Street well has been cleaned. Capacity was increased from about 160 gallons per minute to about 270 gallons per minute. We do have, we've tested per IDEMA regulations on everything, including manganese, PFOs. Both manganese and PFOs have passed, so those are good. Items that we've got coming up, the 13 wells are going to be cleaned, I think, the week after Thanksgiving. That's still pending, but I believe that's the schedule at this point.
Weather?
Weather dependent and scheduled in the Midwest. That was the, when we met them out there, Brian, that was the plan. We kind of wanted to do it before, but we were waiting on that tank to be back done. So it's going to be after Thanksgiving. We've got, we're going to evaluate the filter media plant, backwash procedures, that's upcoming. We're going to also clean the clear well for a treatment plant. And we're going to meet probably in the next, before the next council meeting in December and talk about water main replacement systematic process and program. That's about it. If you may have any questions, Chad?
For the gas utility, we currently buy our gas through Ron Magnum.
Ron Reagan.
Reagan. That's the name of the company. Either way, is there, is there anything that we could do to purchase our gas directly from Citizens in the meantime? Is there a process we would have to go through for that? Because the, the cost from Citizens is much lower than what we pay on the market, and I would like to find a way to save our citizens money on their, their heat bill now before we get the, the sale finalized and approved.
Well, that's a real good question. I can make that inquiry. I don't know the answer to that, but I'll ask.
I know, I've spoken with gentlemen at Citizens Gas in the past, and they were open to it before the, the discussion of the sale ever came up. But we'd never, we never made it to the part or process of figuring out how that actually works. They, they are on the same pipeline system as us.
Yes.
Which makes it easy, in theory.
Okay, I'll ask. I don't, I don't know it all, man. You have other questions?
Anyone else? Thank you, Dan.
All right, thank you.
Now we've got Resolution 2025-07 to fix a Scrivener's air in a local, in a local agreement with Pendleton on County Road 700 South for the right of way for it to be redone for a property that is getting a concrete plant on the Pendleton side. They are redoing both sides of the road at the developer's cost. Now, you want to have any questions on this?
And this is just a simple, the, the name of the business that he was correct?
Yes, yes. We voted on this once already, and they had a Scrivener's error.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-07 for this Scrivener's air.
Brian?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Okay, now we're going to move on to Resolution 2025-08. This is a resolution to combine bank accounts. If you could explain, yes, you've explained it to me, but it'd be much better.
Yeah, no, that's no problem. After speaking with, as you all know, we have a separate banking account for, checking account for the Cascaden Fund, the redevelopment commission, and then our regular checking account. After speaking with the State Board of Accounts, after they've been here the last couple of months, that they recommended that we just combine all three of them. We keep, the, the funds are already kept separate in Keystone, and they don't have to be kept separate in separate checking accounts. I spoke to the DLGF yesterday. She said the same thing, the less checking accounts, the less chance you have an error. So in, with Cascaden, it would help a lot of things as far as having to do transfers, which you are about to see, with transfers and things like that. So that's basically all it is. Once, once you guys vote, if you vote that we can do that, then I will go ahead and, we're in the process of also switching to State Bank. So I will probably just go ahead and start off with the redevelopment and the Cascaden going into that bank, and then we'll move our main checking account for utilities once they open, they said probably April to early May. Once they open their bank here in LaPelle, then we'll go ahead and put those in there as well.
So basically on your end, Teresa, it's just basically adding a line item for you, right? In your Keystone, I mean, I know they're separate accounts, but it's just a, in the grand scheme of the budget, it's just a line, what I say a line item, like it's, like Parks 200 or whatever it's.
It doesn't have anything to do with that. It's our actual checking account. There's separate checking accounts for all three of them, plus there's a TIF account as well. What it's going to do is all three of those, those monies are all going to go into one checking account, but they're still separate and fun. It's still, it's nothing going to be created.
So are costs of making fees to go down?
Yeah, well, we aren't going to have any with State Bank.
There you go.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-8 to combine bank accounts.
Hang on, give me a second. Okay, that's ordinance, never mind. Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
I would like to also make note that at 7:41, that Gary Shuck had arrived.
Moving on to Resolution 2025-09. This is the transfer resolution she just spoke of. Yes, please.
All right. When I received my 1782 notice, there, I had a note on there, even though we paid the park, the parks has ran out of Cascaden, and that's how we budgeted. I found out that you do still have to do the transfer from Cascaden to the Parks Department. Not just because the government says, yes, you can use that money for that, you still have to do the transfer. So it's the transfer for the money you guys budgeted for 2025 in order for us to get budgeted for 2026.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-07.
My second.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
I need to talk about this over here in the public hearing on this. Okay, the municipal wastewater rate increase. Dana spoke at a few meetings about this. We have a lot of stormwater inflow into our wastewater system. That causes several problems. It causes our daily rate to go up, which limits our capacity. We have looked into lining our sewer mains to alleviate some of the inflow of stormwater and groundwater into that system. That's what these water rate increases, wastewater rate increases are for, is for the lining process. And just to remind everyone that anything that happens in the utilities, as far as projects goes, is funded by ratepayers. So, and the wastewater is funded by the rate you pay in wastewater. Same thing with water, same thing with gas. Is anyone here having questions for you up in the public hearing? Okay, at this time, I will close the regular town council meeting and open a public hearing on the wastewater rate increases. Give us the information, please.
Again, for the record, close Chrome with Chrome and Associates. Thank you. And the Indiana Code sets out the rate making formula for municipal utilities. We've been working with the town on this at least six, six months or so, and at the last at least six, six months or so. And at the last meeting, we, we did an overview of recommendations that we came up with. I think that you've made a solid plan. We're going to phase in over three different steps in nine-month intervals. A means of doing some design and stuff, engineering studies in the interim. It would be sufficient to, to do a, you know, about a two million dollar bond issue. I don't, that may not be enough, but at least in the meantime, you're, you're building up some capital to, to frame some of the total cost of the project by, by having a, a funding resource for the engineering studies that will be ongoing. And yeah, it's not uncommon, you're, you're not alone in the situation where you've got high inflow, infiltration and inflow. That's any, any community that's had a wastewater utility for any lengthy period of time has I and I problems and tech, not the new technology is so much better than what it was maybe fifty years ago. But sliplining is obviously a very popular means of addressing those issues to the extent that that works. Again, the, the Indiana Code sets out this formula where you need to, it says you shall finance, fund, rates shall be sufficient to fund cash operating expenses, working capital, debt service on bonds and other indebtedness, debt service reserve requirements, and then funds for depreciation and allowance for replacements and improvements. So that's the formula that's been utilized in, in our study. We use 2024 as our test year for purposes of coming up with the projections of cash operating expenses, our existing debt service, obviously, and then looking at these other requirements for working capital, debt payments coverage, and the allowance for replacements and improvements. Basically, the, we kind of focus on the four thousand gallon customer. That seems to be the benchmark that the state uses for most of its grant programs and funding programs. But the way your rates are structured, you've, you've got, I, I would guess about twenty percent of your customers are minimum users where they're using maybe less than a thousand gallons of water a month. So I'm, I'm going to give you a few examples for the four thousand gallon average that the state uses. We're looking at about seven dollars fifty cent rate increase taking effect as soon as practical. It's going to take a while to reprogram the computers. And then phase two will kick in in July of next year. The, it would go up an additional eight dollars and sixty cents a month for a four thousand gallon customer. And then in July of 2027, that's actually a twelve-month interval there, it would go up another six dollars and seventy cents. So this provides significant capital to be, initiate these engineering studies without having to borrow money, you know, right now. We've done the same approach with the stormwater rates, although those are pretty nominal even with the three phases. We're talking about less than a buck and a half a month increase over the three, three-phase increases. For the, for the thousand gallon months customer, which I think will capture most of your single elderly widow fixed income type customer, you really, right now, they're paying about twenty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents a month for a thousand gallons. That's going to go up about four dollars and thirty cents in the first phase. And then about an additional five dollars in the second phase and the final phase of about three dollars and fifty cents. So over the course of the three-step phase, and those customers would, would increase about thirteen dollars a month. Could be less if they use less than a thousand gallons. You have a few meter customers. I think they're based on about five thousand gallons a month. And then you have flat rates, I believe, in the Fisherburg area and so forth. So that in a nutshell, on the last page of the handout, you'll see a rate comparison with a number of other communities and like Jenny, right before the meeting asked, well, what's a good comparison for our community? We just finished a study up in Ashley, Indiana, where their rates had to go up to a hundred and eight dollars a month for an average customer. New Palestine has passed a couple of steps, you know, different phase in rates there. There's, they're going to end up at about a hundred and thirty-seven dollars a month. Sullivan, Indiana, a hundred and six dollars. Nashville, Indiana, about ninety-five fifty, and so on. Even with the third step phase, and you're sort of in the middle of the pack with, with these rate comparisons. And I know it's easy for me to say these are a good deal. They are, but you know, what, if you've ever had problems with wastewater in your house, you pay whatever it takes to get rid of it, but you're, you're not out on a limb here and every community is going through these same, wrestling with these same issues that, that you all are. And so with that, that's a little groundwork for the public hearing and might be appropriate at this point. If there's any public comments or questions from, from you, I'd be glad to try to address those.
This being a public hearing, there is public comment. If anyone has anything they'd like to say.
Is our combined?
You guys are completing.
Pick them up.
Um, Drew Davis, I just want to put it on record that we're talking about increases in our rates. And you guys have expressed multiple times, like if you have an issue with our water, to come to the town and ask the town instead of putting it on Facebook. And I did so when I got a positive result for coliform in my drinking water. And sure, you said follow up and said that she would get back with me. She never did. So I followed back, I followed up with her again in November. And I still have not heard anything from you guys. My water was yellow yesterday. So I might have multiple pictures from the last few weeks of my water being yellow. And again, I reached out with a positive coliform test in my water, which I don't, if you guys need to, like, read what that is, it's pretty gross to have in your drinking water. So I asked the town to follow up, even though I was in the process of having item follow up. And when I brought it to your attention, I feel like you guys should have responded to that. And now you guys are talking about increases in water rates, and we'll do anything to get rid of our wastewater, but I have wastewater in my drinking water. So thank you.
You got a response?
I do. I have the I D M test right here.
Yeah.
I wanted you guys to follow up. You said if I reached out to you, you guys would come out and read and look at it.
Go ahead. I'm sure you've got something to say here.
It's my property. I'm listening to what you got to say. I'm sure it's a podium.
The I D M test.
This is a public hearing on wastewater rate.
Right.
Right, and wastewater, wastewater rates are affected by how much I use my, my water. It's connected. It doesn't, it, they have to do with each other.
That's what your rates are based off of, is how much water you use.
Either way, I have coliform in my water, and I put it on record that you guys didn't respond to it. That's all I had to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Callahan, LaPelle. This is a public hearing.
For wastewater rate increase.
I'm not done.
Well, this is a public hearing for wastewater increase.
In my form to speak on that.
Okay.
So you have a room full of constituents. But none of your constituents, the people you work for, have a copy of what you guys are looking at. We don't have a PowerPoint up here for everybody to see. There's no handouts for the, for the residents to have. But you all get to follow along, put notes on your papers, but the people who should have them are the residents. You all should be well versed in this. You should have been studying this. You should know this like the back of your hand. So why are these not provided to the taxpayers who pay your salary, pay for that paper, pay for all these people to come and present? So a public hearing, especially when you're talking about people's numbers, it's pretty hard to follow along unless we have something in front of us that we can mark down what we're doing. So maybe you guys should actually come here and serve the people.
Thank you.
Sean Johnson, um, are the sewers, like, like storm drain and sewage or this separate?
No, they're, they're not supposed to be. We have tried to, the smoke testing was to see if we had any gutters, yard drains, if there was a storm sewer that was missed that was dumping into a sewer wastewater main. We don't have those results back yet, but that is, that was part of the.
Are they like running parallel, I guess, or?
They don't necessarily run parallel.
They can, but they're, they're crisscrossed. They're designed to be separate.
Yes, they are designed to be separate. What is basically taken in on the roads is stormwater. What comes from your house is wastewater.
Now then, back in nineteen ninety-nine, we started a project to alleviate combined sewer system. There were some storm drains, and we went through an extensive project back in the two thousands, two thousand and one of separating the combined sewers. But we're still getting, when it rains, and sometimes the other time, we're still getting inflow. What we're looking at doing here, just to answer that question, is no matter, we've looked at with the population projections that we have, that we're going to have an increase in population, which would necess, would necessarily make us build a new wastewater treatment plant. So whether we're using the old plant, which we're using now, or we build a new plant, if we don't get rid of the infiltration, building a new plant is just wasting our time. So we've got to get rid of our infiltration first. And that's what this project is starting.
Sure. So I understand that because it's an expensive project, the idea is to raise the price of sewer. Once that's funded, will the rates go back down to some lower level? Like, is this a temporary thing to fund this project over whatever, however, years?
I'm actually not sure how that works. Dan, do you?
I don't think so. It's not how the model is buzzed, is it?
I would hesitate to say that rates are going to come down from, because they're still, even with these increases, those are still pretty low rates. And obviously, the scope of the project that is developed over the next year or so, that the engineers are doing their study, will dictate, you know, the future as far as the I and I situation is. But building a new treatment plant will be expensive. Like, you know, you're probably looking at at least ten dollars per gallon per day for, for a, a new wastewater treatment plant. That could be, that could be a lot more, but what's the capacity of the current?
Capacity is four hundred thousand gallons a day. We're looking to increase that to at least double potentially. And you're looking at.
With the existing plant or the new plant?
The new plant. Well, we will use parts of the old plant. That project's thirty to forty million dollars.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll be looking at grant opportunities or forgivable funding is the term that the state revolving fund uses.
So this increase isn't just for?
But if we had to finance eight million dollars, that would be, you know, considerably more.
The idea that the increase will also be used for like a new plant when that's necessary.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Will, will this rate increase, is this not just for that ingress issue, but also potentially like building another or bigger, better treatment facility?
This rate increase will not build a new treatment facility, but it will help fund the engineering studies necessary to figure out where the primary sources of infiltration and inflow come in and to try to mitigate as much as possible so that then the wastewater treatment plant can be right-sized after you've mitigated the infiltration and inflow issues. But you, if you're at four hundred thousand gallons per day now, and presumably, you're going to be a, a growing community, which we've seen in most of the donut counties around Indianapolis. That eight hundred thousand, you know, doubling the size is probably, you know, a good first step, and they'll probably make a footprint that can be expanded beyond that. And then as you grow and your customer base, that helps, those debt service payments are fixed costs. They don't, they don't grow up. Operating costs go up with more customers, but the debt payments will remain flat. So the more customers you have, then the more you can spread those fixed bond payments over. So but I would hesitate to speculate that rates will come down at this point.
Sure, quick things. We calculate the sewer cost based on the, the water usage, right? Is that, like, what, roughly, is that like five a gallon, or do they measure like per thousand gallons or?
Right now, the the, uh, the flow, the volume rate right now is seven dollars.
Get in your chair and give it to them.
Seven dollars per thousand gallons.
Well, now, I don't mean the cost, like, just how, how accurately are we able to meter it roughly? Like by the gallon or ten gallons?
By the gallon.
Okay, well, yeah, it's probably by the ten gal. I would, I would think the meters are probably in tens of gallons or, I don't know.
There's that, where you add two zeros, like.
Okay, so they're in hundreds of gallons, which.
So what I'm in that, why jack the, the cost of wastewater? Like, if we can measure the consumption down to whatever, ten gallons, why not just set the rate and repay for what you use?
It, it rolls over the next month. You know, if, if, if you round up to the nearest hundred one month, then the next month, that gets recaptured back. So it's not a.
Yeah, well, like, but we don't really need a bracket if we can just, we already know down to whatever, like ten gallons or a hundred gallons. Why not just bill it by that rate?
Well, they are billing in hundreds of gallons right now, so.
I thought you were saying there's like a thousand dollar or a thousand gallon minimum.
That's, well, the rate, the rate is set at some, right now, seven dollars per thousand gallons. Everybody pays. There are no volume discounts for big users. They pay the same rate for every thousand gallons they contribute.
Okay, so that, that four thousand gallon, that's just like.
That, that's just an example, because four thousand gallons is what the state generally uses to qualify for potential grants or potentially the interest rate that would be assigned to a particular community. So that's sort of the benchmark. That's why we always focus on that. But if you're a minimum user and you use five hundred gallons, okay, for instance, instead of paying seven dollars, there's a base charge right now of twenty-two, twenty-five. If they use five hundred gallons, they only pay half of that seven dollar rate. They would pay, three dollars and fifty cent would be the volume charge. So there are, there are two components, the base charge and the volume charge.
Thanks.
For the record, www.in.gov, both an individual's increase in water usage and a utility system general need to fund wastewater-related infrastructure and operations contribute to increases in water and sewer rate. Has absolutely everything to do with my water, my drinking water. And I just also want to point out the fact that you took the time to bring the item report with you tonight. And it's been a month, but nobody from the town has bothered to reach back out to me to either of my follow-ups to the town.
I got these.
Thank you.
Five minutes before the meeting started.
So you're showing us, you're prepared to present all this?
A month later.
They were just done.
No, we're not. I reached out to you on, in, in October.
These are IDEM tests, these are not town of LaPelle tests.
We know they're.
We know because she won't come test the water.
Go ahead, man.
Okay, my name is Nicole Cappiashanti, and I'm here because I'm a concerned citizen. My mother died last year, November 1st, 2024. She contracted an incurable disease at the age of six from groundwater contamination in Anderson, half mile from our real water plant that was added to the national priority list in 2018. So I had no clue about all that until after she died. And so it kind of put me in a tailspin of learning about water and wastewater. So I, as you guys were sitting here talking, and I have covered this for a while, but are you guys familiar with the EPA website that shows the detailed reports of everything going on with your wastewater treatment and your water plant? If not, I suggest that you look it up, because currently it says that your wastewater plant is in violation. The violation has been identified and it's been there for several months. And it looks like E. coli, coliform, and all the things that people are concerned with. CWA report, when you pull it up, or the affluent chart, I should say, it talks about outfalls. So it says they're all contaminated, like all contaminants. And that's a major concern because something's going on with the water, because people have been complaining about it. Erin Brockovich got involved, she wrote a report about it. So it's not this, you guys, Chesterfield was popping 930% above action level and put it into White River, okay? I live upstream from, from Chesterfield. My husband got sick in June from some type of whatever, and it was the grossest thing. I'm not going to go into detail about it, it was pretty gross. But anyway, he was sick, I didn't get sick. But it got, somehow I found that and it sent me on this other tailspin. So I'm here because I'm concerned about the kids in LaPelle. I'm concerned about the environmental contaminants going on. And then as I'm sitting here, you, and I know you said something about P. phospho and magnes. Magnes, that concerns me. But you said it was the, I'm sorry, I know, I'm supposed to be focusing here. But is there a place where I can find that information? Like, do you guys have to test just like the Anderson Water Plant? And then do you put your reports online? Like if I go to the website, I can find all that?
Well, it gets submitted IDEM and eventually gets into their website. I'm not sure if the town submits any of that online, that's. It's required by IDEM, so they do the testing.
Okay.
And it's under limits.
No, I know you said that, but that concerns me because like ours, and I am a Madison County resident. I'm going to run for office the next couple of years, so you might see me again. But I'm concerned about the condition of your guys' water, your wastewater. I'm not sure what's going on. I don't know if it's broken pipes in certain areas that's affecting certain people more than others. But the fact that all the pictures are popping up, I'm kind of in the process of mapping some of them. And maybe later I can bring that to you guys. So that might help you guys figure out a location to why some people are getting affected and why some people aren't. So it's like you got like a 25% rate of groundwater. And I know that Bree. I love her children. Her children are some of the most little precious babies I've gotten to come in contact with in the last couple of years. So if you guys could take care of that and try to help them with that water, I would very appreciate it, because if you have a sick child, you just, you don't want to watch them suffer for 50 years like I had to, I'm 47, I had to watch my mom suffer for 40 years. So just as a, you know, town leader, you know, when kids start getting sick, it just, you don't want that on their hands later. So I'm glad you guys are opening this up and talking about it and trying to fix the problems. And I look forward to watching the process and helping map. So you'll see me again in the next couple of months.
Yeah, I believe there are three other people ahead of you. Are you guys wanting to come up?
Most of them were wanting to stand because the chairs weren't comfortable. But go ahead.
If I can.
I just want to know about the bond.
If I, if I can say something before we move forward. Part of this process is we have identified that our wastewater plant is, is old. It needs to be updated. We are on the threshold, I don't know if that's the right word, to a requirement by IDEM due to our capacity levels to be forced, if we don't take proactive action, to upgrade our plant. And that's what this process is. We, we identified a year ago that we need to take action. We have a massive amount of storm water influx to our system. And, and everything that we are doing here is to start the process, to deal with those issues that have been found and to, to start that process. As it was said, if, if we don't stop the influx, we would be building a new plant and it would have the same level of influx. So we have to fix the influx first. Otherwise, it's pointless to build a new plant, because we're just going to have a larger ability to process influx. This is, this is, this is us being proactive. We're over a year into the process that got us to this meeting today. So that's.
I know, I think the last meeting, the meeting before, we had talked about like two developers would like to come in, like 125 homes. The capacity that's almost doubled we were talking about, are you going to be able to meet that capacity right there without building another? You know, tanks or, or we need to back through that. And the other thing, we're having a lot of problems right here. And Hemply County is growing out so much and so close here. I know when they built Hemply Town Center, it was Noblesville came in and did that because Fishers couldn't do that. Why can't we think about a partnership there? Or we sold our gas thing, maybe sell our, sell them, go to Hemply kind of there. If they're already building, they got a brand new structure coming out, especially over the Noblesville one over there, just a few miles down the road. I'm not thinking about that. And another thing, they're building new housing additions. Shouldn't they have a pay a connection fee? Should that keep our rates, you know, at least what they are? Or maybe go down? That may, but I also, I also know, and the governor said when they put a tax on there, they'll say it'll come down, Oklahoma never does. But at least ways, they were stable. Or if you can, well, I'd like to kind of know also what, what Hemply County is, how they are compared to where we are. I realize this side over here is not developed as much. So even that, even that whole Madison County, but Hemply County's got a brand new stuff right there coming out. So there'll be something happening.
Yes.
Hold on, wait, and one other thing. You know, Gary and I had talked, and he said, at the school, he said the profit margin we make from the water is very minimal because of state standards. So that's another reason to kind of look into that right there. And really, if it's a big issue, it is a big issue. But, but it'd be easier going forward. But we've, we've got to off to put that into the partnership. And that's where the can responsibilities and for our roads and all that stuff. Their boss, I know that's part of the two, because that runs beside and underneath the streets.
See, can I just make a comment there? One of the nuances in this new rate ordinance is a $4,000 per EDU or equivalent dwelling unit system development charge. Every new house that is built that connects to our sewer system and developers will have to pay that for every lot that they plant. And then we've also increased the tap on fee also proportionally to the retail rate. So a new, a new sewer customer that wants to connect after this ordinance takes effect would pay about $5,400 per, per home or per household equivalent. So that is a nuance. And you're right on target that we want new development to pay its way. Plus, they also put in all the sewers in these developments and extend the mains to the town. So the town, but, but we do have to have capacity at, at the plant. That 400,000, what's, what's the dry weather flow at the plant?
A little over 300,000.
So you're, you're at about 75% capacity on a dry weather activity, but.
Now, would it help, would it help us though, like I mentioned before though, maybe some of the county, some of the development, a new work that are not connected here, as far as getting, maybe the tanks are so expensive, building partnership together? Or even, would it be best for us to maybe think about selling and then then take a look?
The, I mean, those, those are all, the one, the one advantage, if you sell the utility, municipal utilities have certain advantages that investor owned utilities don't. Number one is they're not for profit. They don't have to recover property taxes and income taxes on the fixed assets through the rates. And they're, they're not generating dividends for shareholders and things of that nature. They're, all the retained earnings of the utility stay within the town utility. So those are things that, you know, could be considered. But it's probably, I know in, in the Noblesville situation, I, I lived there, the wastewater treatment plant is way downtown on the White River there. They just built a, a bridge over it. So if you go over that bridge, you, you get a whiff of that whenever you drive over that bridge. But that's certainly something to look at. But the feasibility of transporting, you know, it might, and maybe the engineers here have a better feel for how, how much it costs per mile of main to put in.
Depends on size, but a good rule of thumb is about a million dollars a mile.
Yeah, a million dollars a mile.
And LaPelle is isolated and there's not growth like right up to it. I mean, you're five, 10 miles away from any other sewer system, so that's a long haul.
So when we get all this done, which may be five, 10 years type thing, how long can we expect it to last in the long term? We're talking about 100, a 100 year project, right? 100 years was going to last with proper?
No, we design typically for a 20 year lifespan, but we also design for it to be expandable, depending on growth. And so the growth that you have will pay for that expansion generally with what Buzz just mentioned on the impact fees. But 20 year life on, on things like that. But they typically will last 50 to 50 years. I mean, we're not going to, we're going to build this out of concrete, it's going to last a long time.
And the other thing, has Sunny Creek already combined together or are we still on the talking stage?
Still, we're still on the talking stage. Now, there's a lot of public hearings that come along with that, and then it goes on the ballot for the public to vote on.
Now, is Sunny Creek township, do they have a meeting?
I know they've had one, just to take a vote to agree to start into the process. They have not agreed to merge, it's agreed to start the process of looking at it.
Okay. Okay. And then, okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other quick piece of information based on this gentleman's question. Whether the town of LaPelle owns the wastewater utility or another entity owns it, it still has to have 40 plus million dollars of upgrades that ultimately the users will end up paying for. So just the, just that, even if we sold it so that a, a, a big mega corporation that can move faster than small town government would take it over, it still has to have those same upgrades.
So who, like this build out is going to take, I think it's 40 million. If the rate increase is supposed to cover that over time, who's, who's like covering the costs in the meantime once they've paid off? Like is, are there companies that does the work, do they?
That's, that's what the rate is for. And then if we would finance it for a bond. So right now, this, this rate increase is only based on $2, $2 million of repairs and not the entire 40 mil, 40 million dollar project.
So would the work not start until we had saved up that $10 million?
No, we would have to get financing for it, but we'd have to issue a bond.
Okay.
We haven't done anything with upgrading the sewer plant yet. This is to try to fix the inflow to increase our capacity with what we have right now.
And the bonds, what, I'm not familiar with. Is that like a?
It's like a loan.
It's how government takes out a loan.
Okay, that's the collateral.
The town can get a lower cost of capital than a private entity also, because the lowest rate right now offered by the state revolving fund is in the low 2% range where, you know, if a private company owned it, they would have two different, they would have a debt rate that's probably around 6%, I would guess. And then they would have an equity rate of return of 10 or 12%. So the cost of capital under municipal ownership is a much better deal for the rate payers.
So the, the state government is where, where the bond money comes from? Is it from a bank or what?
Well, there, there's a state revolving fund that offers low interest, below market interest rate loan programs and the potential for some, what they, they call forgivable funding, which is the same as a grant, which hopefully, the, the illustration I gave earlier about Ashley, they got $4 million of forgivable funding on a $12 million project. So they only had to finance about $8 million of a, of a $12 million project. It's possible, you know, if we score high enough on the SRS project priority list, that there could be forgivable funding on the table, but it just depends on, you know, what's available at the time, we're ready to do.
Would we like, maybe then it gets forgiven halfway through the schedule, would we just stop? I guess I'm trying to understand, you know, I get like inflation or the cost of maintaining things goes up generally. But it seems like once we've paid for the work that needs to be done, then the rate should go down to whatever, whatever's necessary to maintain it until the next day. Or will it just accumulate in some fund for some major expense in the future? Like is that?
Well, a new bond issue would probably last 20 to 30 years. So until, you know, hopefully, we don't need another project before the other bonds pay off. But the, it's a lot, once, once you make that commitment, you're committing those funds for a long period of time. But that's how everything is, is financed.
Right, but it won't take forever to pay it off. So it doesn't seem like we need to increase to last forever. For this particular thing, I mean, if there's another project, then, you know, maybe we, rate goes down because we paid that off, but it's going to be the same because we got to pay for a new thing. It just, it just doesn't seem like.
The, the problem is where we have to try and engineer a project based on projected growth of the town. And once we do that, that is what they use for calculating. Well, here's the average cost of the bond, here's the, there's all kinds of factors that go way beyond how long any of us are going to be here. You know, Gary, when was the last update of the sewer plan?
2007, when we renovated the sewer plant.
And we're still paying for that.
I plan on being here 13 years.
I don't know about you, but I do. Well, if I keep taking care of myself, the rate I'm going. End of the meeting might be an issue.
You never know.
But, so it, it, it's a very hard thing to say that, that we, we would ever get to a point where the rate would go down. We would have to get to a point where we've, we've hit the maximum capacity of the town, maximum growth of the town. There's all these things that if you ever get to the point where, well, it's done and there's no more financing, and there's no more growth, and there's no more anything, then the rate would be established at that time for what it is at that time. But anytime a rate is done, the study that these fine folks have done has to be done per state law to determine what the rate should be. We don't get to just make it up and go, here you go, here you go.
And then with the, regarding like the documents from today, like where do we find those? Like, let me see. Like, in general, are they on the county website?
For the public, I just kind of, I, I don't think people fully understand a bond. And so I, I want, it's kind of like a credit card. So you're telling me we need a $2 million bond to do this project, correct? Say we take this project, are you doing a 20 or 30 year bond?
I would, I think the best financing terms are probably 20 years, but 30 years would help either rate down a little bit.
Okay. So what happens here is when you take a bond for $2 million and say, we're just gonna say 3% cause he said that, you know, somewhere in the two, we're just 2, 3% to make it easy. That means that annually we would be paying about $60,000. Over 20 years, that means the taxpayers would pay 1.2 million. Over 30, we would be paying about 1.8 million. Now, while we're talking about the town of LaPelle, on Tuesday, the county wants a $10 million bond for the jail. So we are going to be on two different bonds because we have to pay county and we have to pay the town. But people need to understand, these bonds are not cheap and we will pay a lot of money in the end. It's just like a credit card. If you don't pay it off really quick, you're gonna pay those interest. So please understand what these bonds do. And then if they take another one and another one, we just go further and further into debt. So I just want to be clear about the bonds for everybody to have a good understanding. It's called transparency.
One of the questions, I know we're gonna do like 20 million dollar bonds, uh, or $2 million bond rather. And how much, if we had another, if somebody else happened drastically, we had to do, being a small town, say we needed $10 million for something else, are we gonna be able to get that because of already existing bond we have? Or are we gonna be in waiting here?
Require a rate increase?
Yeah, in order to, in order to get finance, it, it, it's kind of like a mortgage. If you look at, if you wanna relate to that. And you have to have a minimum coverage ratio, meaning that your net revenues after paying all your cash operating expenses have to be at least 125% of your annual debt service payments. And on a $2 million, uh, 20 year bond issue, it, it's probably gonna be closer to over $200,000 a year to pay that back. So now, once you make that step, then as you grow your customer base, the cost per customer will come down. But there's gonna be, your, your comment on inflation was right on. I mean, uh, inflation rates are coming down now, but, you know, after COVID, it just went through the roof. I, I've never, not seen construction costs come down. They're maybe going up at a lesser rate, but I haven't, I think they changed how they spell the word steel when they use steel in the construction. They put, slipped an A in there somewhere. Good question, excellent questions.
Do we know, do we know how much storm water or estimate how much storm water is infiltrated? We went through a pretty dry spell there.
We know. We've got a number.
It's a secret.
Is there a percentage?
It is not a secret.
We're fair with this.
I don't know the number off the top of my head, Catherine.
But you know.
I don't know it off the top of my head.
I don't even know.
But this is what the meeting was for tonight.
Well, just for instance, Catherine.
Yes.
During the tornado outbreak back in April.
Yes.
The infiltration from Fishersburg alone went from 10,000 gallons a day to 85,000 gallons in one day.
Okay, so you know.
And you can relate that, that, that is also relatable.
Right.
To the rest of the town.
So what is today's?
Today? Today would be minimal.
But.
It, it normally runs about what?
Two to four times more than normal.
Right.
I mean, that's what he's asking.
Yes. It's a.
I'd, I'd say you're probably, I and I is probably double what the build flow is or more because your annual.
So we're 300,000 on a storm. We're probably what, 340 then, 350 somewhere there.
No, you're looking at, so if your average day at bri is 300,000, you're looking at somewhere in the six, eight hundred thousand during a storm. Depends on the intensity of the storm. Depends on a lot of different factors.
Right.
Uh, but we have all those figures and it's all over the board. And it's not unusual for this size of town. Not at all.
And just knowing the age of some of our infrastructure. Is there a print that shows every single tie in on to the city sewer?
We have, they have a lot of them.
We got a lot, but we don't have everything.
Roger and I have talked about this a couple of weeks ago and I, I was just kind of curious on that. You know, knowing that the age here, you know.
Records, uh, 60 to 80 years ago, one is good as today. I would just say that.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, I'm sure we don't have an idea of how many clay tiles are still on the system. Is that something that's, when we go through this, that as we find a clay tile, either hey, you need to replace this because we could be having stormwater infiltration on that or?
It'll be documented, yes. But right now, we don't know what we don't, we just don't know.
But as, as we find a clay tile, are we gonna tell the homeowner, you gotta get, you know, you gotta pay to have this replaced or?
Well, it's a good question. There are some towns that will line to the property or to the property line. There are some that say that that's the town, that's the residence to the sewer line. I've seen it both ways.
Do we have any idea of how many sump pumps might be tied into?
Uh, I think that's a big number actually.
Yeah.
We're hoping that when we get the results from the smoke testing that we did, that that will tell us a whole, a lot of the, where the tiles, the ladders are leaking. Uh, if there's some pumps tied into it, cause it'll, it would have come up into the house. So we'll find a lot when we get that result to that, the smoke test back.
Yeah, the average daily build flow is about 155,000 gallons per day. And our rated capacity is 400,000, but with peaking factors at 800,000. That difference is the I and I. So, and it sounds horrible, but it's not abnormal what we see in other communities that have old sewer systems. So, um.
Well, I think it's good. My family's from Frankton and those folks up there are paying an astronomical price now for their sewer system. And I didn't force them, so I, at least we're getting ahead of it and getting an idea.
I always come here.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Somebody's asking, when will the results of the smoke test be released to the public?
I will probably get them in a couple of weeks. You know, I'll have a chance to look at them and then I'll give them to you guys and whenever you guys want to release them. It's up to you.
How long has we disseminated? Passed out.
I got that on. Trying to formulate an answer for you. We can put them on the website.
Yeah.
And then you put them on the website. We will put them on the website.
Excellent. Will that be before the end of the year?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Just looking at a timeline.
As soon as we have them, we will get them on the website.
Thank you.
There's no one else at this time and we'll close the public hearing and resume the regular town council meeting. This is the second reading. This is the ordinance 2025 dash five wastewater second reading ordinance. Establishing a revised schedule of wastewater rates and charges for the town of LaPelle. Does anyone on the council have any questions? I entertain a motion to pass for a second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Oh, I don't need it too. Who's second, sorry? I didn't. Brian.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance 2025 dash six limb ordinance. This is a second read. This is for limb pickup.
And the public hearing for that will be next one, for the next three of them.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on this ordinance thing, second read? I would entertain a motion to pass 2025 dash six.
I'm not good. Take that. Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Then we have a second read for the drainage ordinance 2025 dash seven. This is an ordinance for, ordinance of the town council of the town of LaPelle, acting as the board of public works and safety, adopting the Madison County Drainage Ordinance as the town of LaPelle Stormwater Control Ordinance. We are mirroring Madison County's ordinance. Anyone have any questions? I entertain a motion to pass ordinance 2025 dash zero seven, second read.
I'll make a question.
I'll second.
Brian. Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025 dash zero eight. This is a right of way permit and fee, second read ordinance. This is establishing fees for use of the right of way. Making sure that contractors are putting back the right of way as they found it when they run utilities, internet, those types of things. Any questions from the council? I entertain a motion to, zip, ordinance 2025 dash zero eight, second read.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Uh, the KMR vault removal, would you get a price on that?
No, I, I didn't know if you want, wanted me to get like an estimate just for that part of the project to get started. I am more than welcome to contact them if you guys want me to. That's why it's on the agenda.
Um, I would think so. Um, does anyone else have any?
No, we need to get a price for this here. Just to remove it. Yeah, just to remove it.
Yeah, to allow me to get.
I'll make the motion to allow three city ordinance. K R M to remove just the vaulting.
Second. Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Apartment reports. Police department, nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Planning, all we had last week was we administered an address to a property on State Road 13 for heat energy. Utilities.
Good evening. Um, Dan kind of took most of my updating with the water, the water projection, the water tower drawn up. Everything's back online, like you said, front of normal. Uh, all bags are off the hydrants, everything's back the way it was before. Um, wanted to give a public thanks to Chief Renner and the entire fire department that helped us. And Chief, he really coordinated with us really well, dispatched everybody. Went about as good as you can expect. Um, we got the leak machine back today. Guys ran it most of the afternoon. It worked well. It looks like they replaced the engine on it, what it almost looks like to me.
Really?
Um, it smelled new, like you know how you have that new smell.
Well, then it's gotta be good.
Yeah, so we're gonna, uh, rain, weather depending, we're gonna bust hard on getting leaks picked up. Uh, we might work over a couple of days next week. Weather's nice, just to give it done before Thanksgiving, so.
And that was all covered under warranty.
Yeah, that was all covered under warranty, yeah. It was nothing to do on our part. We asked to make sure there wasn't something that we were, we were doing, but everything was good. Um, holidayed hall will go up on Main Street after Thanksgiving. Uh, we, one of the rain days last week, we made sure all the bulbs worked and snowflakes and all that stuff. So everything's good to go for that. Uh, T and I completed our, uh, water class. It's an 80 hour class, they shoved it into 32 hours. There's a lot of information, some long days. Um, but I'm happy to say that T and I both passed our test, so we're good there. Um, I think it's it, that's all I got. Unless you guys have something for me?
All right, thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Parks.
Uh, the only, we had the school board appointed Matt Niambol to fill the position of Stacy. So, and then the buddy swing was delivered to the utility barn in the last month. So there, we're gonna hope to have that installed early spring.
Thank you. R D C.
Uh, we met in our regular scheduled meeting earlier today. We had our end of year reporting recap. Uh, we are in a good financial position. We have established our, uh, 2026 spending plan, uh, for the categories that we are, uh, focused on for next year. Uh, that's not a budget, but that is basically we had to establish, uh, categories that we would be investing in, uh, for the next year. That is all complete and submitted to the state before December.
Thank you. Administration.
Thank you, Council President Robertson. I'm beginning to you all. I'm very happy to report that we completed the pavement surface and evaluation rating for Pazer ratings around 26 miles of roadway in LaPelle. A special thanks to town employee Lisa Nichols for her work on this project as a certified Pazer raider. And also to council member Chuck for being our driver, our guide, and as always, the town historian. These ratings are required to secure road funding. They will help us to be more competitive when grants do become available. It has been discussed in previous meetings that, um, the prior ratings were done by a vendor and it cost the town $20,000. So I'm very pleased we were able to deliver value to LaPelle taxpayers in bringing this work in-house. Um, second, we've made significant, significant process, uh, progress and I'm not gonna repeat Dan or Brandon and, um, our work to improve our water delivery. Um, I'd like to thank the council for all the resources you've made available in allowing this to happen. And I think that our team, Brandon, U Mac, Dan Cutshot, and also support from IDAM has resulted in a very good working group who is always focused on making sure we're staying on the right path in addressing our water issues. The Association of Indiana Municipalities has met since our last meeting, um, in October. The main topic of conversation as always is the impacts of Senate Bill 1 of Publical Governments. The expertise and guidance through AIM is gonna be extremely valuable to us as we navigate uncharted waters. Um, and also during the next session, where it does sound as though the legislators have some interest in making changes to at least parts of that law. Um, and that will impact us and we will rely on them to keep us advised. Uh, they've also provided, um, a senior advisor. And that senior advisor is gonna be, um, assisting us in staying current with issues, which is gonna be very helpful with me and working with you to set operational planning angles. Um, finally, just looking forward, we are going to be working to build our performance management program for next year. I want to say I've been so pleased to find. I wanna say, I've been so pleased to finally have such a great team of town employees, they work very hard, they're very conscientious, and one of the big lifts that I was happy to find was already done is something Brandon did. He's been working very hard in the area of cross-training, he's ensured that multiple employees know how to do tasks, and he's also used the opportunity to address a very important thing in performance management, and that's succession planning, to make sure that we have things in place to, um, support long-term excellence with our workforce. So I think that, um, this is something that is a marker of quality in any organization, and I'm very happy that I'm not starting from ground zero in performance management, many good practices are already in place. Um, I know, I said that was the final thing, but it's not. We have a donation box, I don't know how popular we are on the internet right now, but I would like to get the word out, we have a donation box at Town Hall, it was stood there by Toys for Tots, and that's, of course, you probably all know, the, um, charity that's operated by the Marine Corps Reserves. So I would invite anyone who's interested in donating to stop by and say hello and drop off a gift for child purposes. That concludes my report, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You have a question? Thank you.
Thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
For treasure report.
Um, and you can do it when we're done, I have a memorandum of executive session for the September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Um, I also wanted to bring up, and I think Gary might have a little bit to say about this too, we had several customers that are wanting to put their trash or water on tips because they're going to Florida for two or three months or something. It's causing quite a bit of problems because, mainly because we bill a month behind. Um, what it does, it like shuts off where they don't, I don't know, we're gonna have to look to see if there was an ordinance, or we do another ordinance to fix it, that's something you guys can decide, but, so they pay twenty dollars, and then we go into the computer system and you put them on tips where they don't get charged for their water, sewer, trash while they're gone, or we have some that just do their trash, and, um, so Gary asked that I bring it to you guys' attention, that that's some of what some customers are doing, so.
Well, unfortunately, um, the trash service keeps charging us whether you, they pick it up or not, if they, there's so many households they contracted for, and they, they keep paying, we have to pay that every month, so that, that is a fixed cost that keeps going, so somebody's gotta pick it up, pick up that cost. Same way with the water and the sewer, those are minimal, if you're not using it, you'll be on the minimum, and those are also fixed costs. We still have, still cost us money to produce that water, and whether you're, it's still a fixed, so dropping off, and, and most towns don't do this. Um, we started it a long time ago because we weren't that big, and we didn't have as much cost involved as what we do now. Now we have lots of fixed cost, and back when it was, trash was six dollars a month, it wasn't so bad, but now, and we have to, and we have to pick that up, it's, it's an added cost. So think about that, we may, like I say, we may have to look at an ordinance or a resolution or something, but, and, and that may not be, you may not wanna do that, but I, I think it's something we need to look at.
What, what services do we have tips on now?
You can do it on any of them, so we have several, I say several, there's probably five or six that they go to Florida in the winter, and so it, it basically shuts off all their services except for their stormwater, or if they're gone three months or whatever.
And do they physically go out and shut their water off?
Yeah, so it doesn't freeze and stuff, so.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
There is no way to disconnect your sewer, and that base charge should be billed every month for the reason that you stated. Now, on water, I think I U R C has rules that allow people to turn their water off, and for good reason, like you, like you mentioned, but we should have a reconnection fee that restitutes the water utility for those fixed costs that, and I would say the same thing on, uh, trash, there's no, you know.
And that may, that may be what we need to look at, all those options.
The water might be a little tricky, but you can counteract that with a reconnection charge, if somebody just, I don't, do you charge them anything for reconnection when they come back from Florida?
They're just, they pay twenty dollars and that's it. And it was started before I ever come in.
No, I'm, I'm, I know Florida, that's the one that might be a little, but if you have a resolution or ordinance that lays out just what you just said, Gary, that was right on point, and, um, like I say, the water might be a little trickier, but, but for the wastewater, they should, you can't disconnect that, and you've got all those fixed costs, bond payments, et cetera, that, that go on whether you're using water or not, and, um, so I, I agree with what you're saying there, and catch the, catch the water users on the backend when they reconnect, or have a charge for disconnect and reconnect. They can still shut the water off, that's not a bad, a bad idea, but just thought I'd throw my two cents in there, thank you.
But how many are we talking about, though?
Five or six, I think.
Well, we're talking about five or six, you know, it's a small community right there, maybe we shouldn't charge them that right there, you know? I mean, I understand, maybe, maybe, maybe not the, not the water, but charge them the other maybe, but it works, you know, no, we're talking five or six, that's min, that's minimal, we're talking.
Well, it kinda puts the cost on the other taxpayers.
Ratepayers.
Ratepayers, sir. If Florida's desperate for five or six people, we're gonna need to try.
At the end of the day, we have, no matter what it is, we have to have a, a resolution or ordinance or whatever's necessary to govern it, uh, in case it balloons to, you know, two hundred people decide to go to Florida, uh, we don't bankrupt.
And I can get that, you know, have a number right there, I can, I can understand that.
Yep, and that's all that is, we're, we're discussing, we need something to govern what we're doing so that it's fair and consistent and legal.
Uh, anything else, no?
Yes, uh, the next thing I wanted to do was thank all the volunteers who helped us pass out flyers on a Friday evening, uh, for the smoke testing. Uh, we printed off, uh, I believe it was nine hundred or a thousand flyers, we couldn't get the little card readers to work, so we had to tape them all up. So we had volunteers from the public, and I hope I don't forget anybody, uh, Christie Workman and her daughter, and I apologize, I can't remember her daughter's name.
Emily.
Emily, um, Alicia West, uh, Cory Smart and Jasa Smart, and then Dylan Cantor, and I think that's all the people from the public, and then we had several utility workers, um, that also did, actually, all our, all of our utility workers stayed that were here, Brandon was on vacation, and then, um, Lisa in the office, Diane was on vacation, and then Jenny, oh, and I forgot my mom, she came in, and Jenny went together, so we, took us about, eh, three, four hours altogether, all of us, but we got it done. Uh, I just wanted to thank everybody for that. Uh, my next thing is, is you guys are probably gonna need to figure out when you can do a special meeting before the next council meeting, because I have yet to see a salary ordinance.
Yes, that Chad just sent me.
Okay.
I need to bring that up, I'll just go ahead and bring that up now, that is, due by December seventh, if you have anything you would like to change in the salary ordinance, that we need to fly December seventh.
So I would say if we're gonna schedule something, it needs to be credible in the calendar.
Well, the, the week of December first through the fifth, first week.
Yeah. So we would have to have a meeting the week of the eighth at the latest, and it sounds like we have some other things too.
We said December seventh, wasn't it?
Uh, that's for, if everybody gets everything turned in by the seventh, then we can have time to update and then have a meeting to discuss.
So you're looking at the week of eighth to the twelfth.
Yeah.
Would that work?
Yeah, I don't have anything except, the Thursday is the planning, so that's the only night we've done it. Um, I'll just need a date, if you guys don't, uh, want to do it, we're gonna have to do it here, so I will have to check, we can't do it on Tuesdays, because I always run into a problem on Tuesdays having it here. So is there any way we can do it on the tenth?
Works for me.
I'm hoping to tenth.
Because I think I'll for sure be able to get the Lions Club for the tenth.
What time would that be?
Seven.
You wanna do six or your seven?
Regular schedule time?
Seven, I'm gonna do seven. Ten at seven. This will be published.
Yeah. That's all I have, it'll just vote on my executive thing and then the rest of our stuff.
Executive session, September twenty-ninth. That's the one, not the after.
Yeah, our, uh, no, we have, I sent you guys September eighth minutes.
I'll put it as September eighth.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do approval of minutes for, well, that was a special meeting, one of September eighth.
Yep.
The town council's special meeting from September eighth, anyone have any questions on those minutes? I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to accept the minutes from September the eighth.
Let me second it.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
September twenty-ninth, also.
Yeah, that's the memorandum of executive session, that's the piece of paper I handed here, this thing. Oh, no, that's not it.
Yes, all right. Uh, the town council had a executive session, September twenty-ninth, and this is, we take a vote to say that we didn't talk about anything but what was advertised.
I'll make that motion. Toss it here.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
On to the claims, everyone had a chance to look at the claims. Any questions? I would entertain a motion to approve claims as presented.
Motion to approve the claims as presented.
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Approval of the allowance docket. It's just a repeat of the claims. Uh, entertain a motion, anyone have any questions to approve the allowance docket?
Motion to approve the allowance docket as presented.
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Councilmember comments and concerns? There you go. I want to, I wanna speak for myself, maybe the whole town council, in congratulating the LaPelle High School football team on making it to the semi-state. Good luck tomorrow night, first time in history, first time in history they've gone that far. They are down to the final four, as most of you might know, in Class Two A, and of the four teams left, there's only one loss among the four. Only I would know that. I also would like to congratulate the, the soccer team, the girls soccer team, for going as far as they did, undefeated season, and getting as far as the semi-state. And as I talked with the athletic director, uh, LaPelle should be very proud of the students that they have out there, we just, on Monday night, we, we're out at the National Honor Society induction, uh, there are a lot of smart kids in this school, and a lot of good kids in this school, and we can tell by the way they contributed, uh, not only in academics but in, in sports, so I just wanna say congratulations to all the kids that are going, especially the football team tomorrow.
And I believe that, uh, the first time the, uh, Madison County School had went to a one-erational, I think, football.
It's the first time they posted a semi-state.
I thought somebody told me that.
Elwood won the state finals. I'm sorry. Elwood won the state finals.
Yeah.
First time Madison County. Back in the eighties.
Okay.
That's when we were in school.
It was the first time that a Madison County School ever hosted a semi-state.
Well, that's, maybe that's what they ran the whole day, I got you, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, our next meeting will be Thursday, December eighteen, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM, right here at the Lions Club. Now we'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.